Staff, please put 30 seconds on the clock to start our video stream.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the rolls to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Laloie, Councilmember Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Maple, Vice Mayor Guerra, Councilmember Jennings, I expect Mayor Pro Tem Bang momentarily, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Maple, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanod people, the Southern Mideu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Puttwin-Wintum peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancherita-- Rancheria, sorry, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. And then we'll salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. Well, good afternoon, everyone. We have an afternoon council meeting, of course, and a 5:00 meeting, and we are going right into the heart of the city budget, and should be important and active discussions. Let us begin with a special presentation. I'd like to ask Ryan Moore to come forward, our Assistant City Manager, to recognize Public Works Week here in Sacramento, and I assume in California as well.
Around the whole country, in fact.
Around the whole country.
So, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm Ryan Moore, your Assistant City Manager of Municipal Services, and more importantly, I'm also your Acting Director of Public Works still. So I'm here this afternoon to recognize and celebrate our great team here at the City of Sacramento during National Public Works Week. And I'd also like to note that while the City of Sacramento's Department of Public Works is comprised of the divisions you've all come to identify with, many local governments throughout the industry have also included elements of utilities and parks as key parts of the Public Works team. So I also like to recognize the invaluable contributions of our members of those teams here at the City of Sacramento. So Public Works is a thread that connects us all. No matter where we live, every Public Works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the communities served, leading to healthier, happier communities. Public Works connectors help keep communities strong by providing an infrastructure of services in transportation and mobility, engineering, construction, maintenance, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and ground, fleet services, parking management, emergency management, first response, solid waste, urban forestry rideaway management, sustainability, and it goes on and on. They're what make our communities great places to live and work. These teams connect us physically through infrastructure and inspirationally through services to the communities, whether as first responders, as we all saw early this year during the storms in January, or daily workers carrying out their duties with pride. I'm here to ask you to join us in celebrating the quiet work these professionals do to make life better for all of us, and joined here this afternoon by many of our division managers. Stand up, our Public Works Division managers. And behalf of the Senate, thank you for the recognition. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, every week should be Public Works Week. I mean, really, I mean, think about the part of the city that never stops. I mean, there are many parts, actually, but what you do to provide what the public considers to be the basics is really, really important. And to do what you do well allows us then to broaden the agenda, as we like to say, but this is so core and so important that I'm glad that there is rightful recognition. Don't get it enough. Thank you. Thank you very much. Colleagues, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to personally thank also all of the folks at Public Works, whether any hour of the day, 24 hours a day. We cannot run a city. We cannot have a healthy city, a safe city, without all of your work, from your engineers, the day-to-day folks out on the field, everyone involved, and even on the issue of recycling and solid waste. And when we're thinking about all of our climate change issues, our environmental issues, our quality of life issues, that all happens at Public Works. And it's sometimes not the stuff that ends up, you know, on the front page unless this big storm hits and then a big tree comes down. Then they realize, who picks that up and who deals with the issue that shuts the city down? It's public work. So I want to thank all of you out there because you do put your energy out there. Many of you live in my council district. Many of you keep, you know, making sure that we have, you know, a safe place to be here. And with that, Mr. Mayor, glad to recognize Public Works Week as well with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and I join my colleagues in support of this. I just want to say I've had-- I'm a new member, and I've taken the opportunity to go and go on ride-alongs and tours, and it is my goal to do this with every department and every-- and I hope my-- I challenge my colleagues to do the same because really being there and seeing firsthand the work that's done. Ryan's not the only one that wears multiple hats. There are many people in the Public Works Department that wear a lot of hats and do a lot of great work every single day. As the mayor mentioned, this is the work that, you know, the people expect as the basics, but we know it's much more than that. And so just, you're appreciated, and thank you for everything that you do.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to join my colleagues. I can't say enough great things about the work that you do that makes Sacramento a great place to live. It connects all of us through infrastructure and service, and it enhances our quality of life. And I don't know that everybody understands all the great many things that you do in Public Works, but they feel it every single day. They see it every single day. And for those of us who sit on the dais, who work for the city, we see it every single day, and this is our way of saying thank you. And I would ask all my colleagues to join me in giving you a standing ovation, if you will. Please.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. It's really appropriate. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you. Well, it's kind of hard to come right after that with a standing ovation. But again, I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that you do. And to this day, I'm still trying to figure out exactly where your work stops because anything that happens in my district automatically just, you know, have Ryan on my email, and, you know, within minutes, I get a response back, and I know that's very tough. So I'm grateful to all of you and the entire department because, as my colleagues alluded to, without you, we will not have the city that we have and we're so proud of. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. What a great way to start the meeting. Please stay for the rest of the meeting. Let us move to the consent calendar. Are there questions or comments on any of the items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, moved and seconded by either Councilmember Laloie or Kaplan. I'm not sure who pressed the buzzer first. Okay. Do we have public testimony?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Our first speaker is McWorthy. Mr. Worthy is speaking on 3, 4, and 6.
Well, 3, 3, this is the consent calendar, so you want to hold off on 4 and 6, Mr. Worthy, until we get to them.
I realize that by now.
Welcome.
People, what we are seeing here is improvement. Have you been down Stockton Boulevard, or did you go down Stockton Boulevard before 12 years passed? Nobody did. We couldn't see down there. But what we see is retail. All we see is retail. When we go over on Powerian, we see sidewalks. You only see four people a day walking sidewalks. Why the money going sidewalk? Think, people, think. Where's free enterprise? You got to get free enterprise with the portion of the employees here instead of lying to people of business improvement. I was in the business for 50-some years. I didn't know what business improvement means. I lost $50,000 to teach a program. So do I get anything? No. I don't ask you. Stay the hell out of my way. I obtain on the free enterprise. How many people up there understand free enterprise? You don't see it. Where is the moratorium on what the amount of property that's government own? Nobody want to put that. Put the moratorium in. Just tax ceiling for jobs again. We Republicans put that in. 1%? You turn around and use it? No, it's 1% of it. Property increase, people. You are being pimp, public. Wake up. Get some attorneys in here, and I'll go toe-to-toe from there to the courthouse.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, it passes unanimously. We now move to the public hearings. Let's begin with item 4, the citywide fee schedule update. We'll then go to the discussion calendar, the capital improvement program, and of course, the budget hearing on Yipsey.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. My name is Jason Bader with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual citywide fee schedule update. The citywide fees and charges policy sets the guidelines to determine cost recovery levels and establishes a process to add, modify, and delete fees and charges. All fees included in the report qualify as exceptions to Proposition 26, which prohibits the city from increasing taxes by defining them as fees. Staff is recommending adding 37 new fees, 310 modifications, and 21 deletions for a total of 368 changes affecting seven departments. This will generate approximately $2 million of new revenue for the general fund and $740,000 of revenue for other funds. The associated revenue adjustments are necessary to provide appropriate cost recovery related to city programs and services, and these increases are included as part of the proposed FY2324 budget. On May 9, the Budget Audit Committee reviewed and recommended approval of all fee adjustments. If you have specific questions about items included in the report, we have staff available from all seven departments here today. Staff is recommending that the council pass a resolution approving the citywide fee and charge adjustments. Thank you.
Okay. Members, do we have public testimony? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Worthy would like to speak on this item.
Mr. Worthy again. Mr. Worthy, the citywide fee schedule update. What is it about the fees?
They refer to me as Matt, not Mr. I don't get that.
Mr. Worthy.
People, we are seeing thing here. The reason businesses leaving this state fee, you are feeing the hell out of people. You cannot meet the fees what you put in here to increase, to put out and jump on. You don't know where it go. Where is the report how you spent that money? Who you dispatch it to? Bring that up. That's the dog and pony show when you talk about the buzzing. Where is the item? Itemize and get the-- and get the guy to run an audit on it. How much goes to labor and how much goes to the pocket? This is what you public-- this is what you got to bring to these fees. I can't bring it by myself. I can only get here and talk about it. For years, I've talked about the same thing. Wake up. People, why couldn't millions of dollars be put into the people? Equity trust. How many of you all know what a equity trust is? The masterpiece of the Jewish Bill Burger who taught me, a equity trust. You wouldn't have no problem with no-- getting our fees. The equity trust will do it. But you all will take the money and put in public property, and no neighbors have any income of public property. Developers own this town, and then you talk about fees. Where is the people that's educated enough in the business world to come here and file the lawsuit now, people? File it now because it's going to be too late soon. File that lawsuit, people. Understand, I'm a Republican. $39 million been spent, so I'm still walking. We still walking. Spend it here, but you got to put the defense trust fund together and all the together funds to speak it here.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Is there a motion?
I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. We now move to the discussion calendar where there will not be a vote here, but continuation of our deliberation of the 2324 budget. We begin with the capital improvement program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Michael Tamayo, Principal Budget Analyst with the Finance Department. The item before you is the 2023 to 2028 Proposed Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP. The CIP is the city's five-year funding plan for financing-- for funding facility and infrastructure improvements across the city. It's been prepared in accordance with various council-adapted policies and plans, including master plans and deferred maintenance assessments. The five-year CIP totals $465.9 million, including $71.7 million from the General and Measure U funds. Of that amount, $107.3 million is allocated for the upcoming fiscal year, FY2024, including $14.2 million from the General and Measure U funds. Some of the major projects and programs included in the FY24 CIP include the following: the City Facility Reinvestment Program, which funds improvements such as elevator upgrades, roof repairs, and other deferred maintenance needs at city buildings; the Advanced Life Support Equipment Program, which provides funding for the replacement of ALS equipment such as ambulances, defibrillators, and gurneys; the Performing Arts Center Improvements Program, which provides funding for the repair and improvement of the Safe Credit Union Performing Arts Center to maintain a competitive and well-maintained venue; the District 4 Park and Restroom Improvements Project, which will construct a new restroom at Fremont Park in order to maintain ADA compliance requirements; the Transportation Corridor Program, which will address pavement conditions and mobility options citywide; and the Water Plus Program, which will design the plans and specifications for the water supply expansion improvements needed due to future anticipated growth. A full list of projects and programs in the FY24 CIP may be found in the Proposed CIP book, which is available The next steps for the proposed CIP include a review by the Planning and Design Commission on May 25 for consistency with the city's 2035 general plan. The commission's determination will be shared with the Budget and Audit Committee on May 30, when the CIP goes forward for review along with the operating budget. And after that, the full City Council will review the CIP again along with the operating budget on June 13 with a recommendation for adoption. I'd like to thank department staff citywide for their support in helping the Finance Department put together this proposed CIP. This concludes my presentation, and I'm-- and the departments are available for any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll take some questions from the members here. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we want to take public comment first?
How many do we have?
I have two speakers on this item.
Okay, why don't we do that?
The first is Marnie Ledger, then I have one caller online.
Marnie Ledger?
Marnie Ledger.
Ms. Ledger?
This is on item 5, the Capital Improvement Program.
Actually, I was signed up for both, so I'll speak to the park budget as well, if that's okay, or do you want me to wait?
Go.
Yeah, I'm here in support of funding for the Southside Pool repairs, which, as of the October 1st last year's report, was 1.3 million. And this is a really important resource. It's the only pool in the central city. It's the only pool that serves the upper land park area with the low-income housing Marina Vista and Elder Grove. I've seen personally all the kids that walk to Southside Pool. I'm a lap swimmer. I swim there three times a week, so I know how critical it is. I moved from South Knottomas, where nine years ago, where we had Doyle Pool, and then we had the high school pool, and now the new recreation center. Other pools are similarly situated as far as age. I think the Clooney Pool had several budgets of repairs funded, and Southside Pool has not had any. I know it's over 50 years old, and the expense is only going up the longer this goes without being funded. I noticed funding in the budget, I think G7 or something, is $90,000 for the demolishing of a shed that's on the east side of the park. It was part of the historical clubhouse originally at the park, and we had no idea, as far as the Neighborhood Association, that there was funding for the demolition. We were told the last time we had any reports that we were going to learn if there was historical significance. Instead, it's-- that budget should go towards the pool. $200,000 that's in the budget is not going to do it.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete, and I will call you back up for the next item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Colin User 1.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis, and as I listened to number 5, and then I heard the previous speaker talk about swimming pools, that's an issue for me because in Del Paso Heights, and I know for a fact Twin Rivers is part of it, but we've got to find a way to-- Mayor and City Councilman Laloie and the rest of the diocese, we have to find a way to let the youth in Del Paso Heights swim in that pool. We swam in that pool when we were growing up there. Why have it there? Why-- I believe Mayor was there to christen the reopening, which we were thrilled about. Then now, it's so many restrictions that with a heat wave coming in like last year, it was almost devastating to the youth. There were people fainting on the streets of Del Paso Heights. That needs to be addressed where they need somewhere to go swim. I mean, I just heard this person before talking about they were concerned about that. Well, this is incredible. This needs to be addressed. And as I listened to the person say they were a budget analyst, it reminded me of a great person named Mr-- the late, great Mr. John Silva. He was the one who introduced me to the programs that are available in the city manager's office. God rest his soul. He was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Now, I have a question, but I'll turn it to Councilmember Valenzuela first. Go ahead. Or Vice Mayor was first. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to thank staff for their work and I know putting together the CIP. Normally, this doesn't get a lot of attention. It's kind of voted on, and it's moved on, and we move on to the operating budget. But I do want to, you know, bring up-- this is a five-year plan that we tried to put together, and one of the things that has been frustrating me more and more, and I'm sure it does to other folks and many who are parents, and I'll focus that in our parks. And maybe this is a combination for this item and the next item. One, the sense of being able to have parks that are-- feel safe. So one, being able to support, and I know that our park rangers are stretched thin, so I'll leave that comment for the next item, and same thing with park maintenance. On deferred maintenance side, that's something that we can look at the CIP, and then on the worker's side, that's for the next item. But on the capital side, I'm glad to see that District 4 has bathroom restoration and a CIP in there. But there needs to be, and a, you know, misdirection to the city manager and our staff, a path or a plan to make sure that we do have, for families, bathrooms that are clean, that are accessible, at the majority of our parks, as many of our parks. Because if you ever have had a three-year-old or a five-year-old, and we've had this conversation, which I disagree with, about neighborhood parks that all of a sudden, oh, well, that's because then your kid can go back, but if you have to go three or four blocks for your, you know, four-year-old to get to a bathroom, that's just unrealistic. It's not how community parks work. And so I do want to start looking at that. Many of our parks have been closed down, and not the parks, but the park bathrooms have been closed down. And I'll mention Colonial Heights Park, Earl Warren to that, Tahoe Park for a while, and it's been because of vandalism or maintenance and the ability to upkeep them. Well, that goes side and side, and I don't want the isolation or the siloing of how we vote on things to not have this discussion where if we're not ensuring the safety in our parks and the safety of our equipment from being vandalized and whatnot, I want to make sure that we're starting to think through the five-year strategy to have safe and clean parks. And the ones that even have a bigger challenge is our regional parks because they don't get a local allocation or funding sources. And for those that go to the Granite Regional Park, it doesn't even have bathrooms, and it has thousands of people who show up every weekend, and they have to figure out how to struggle with that portal and bring them in and trailer them in. So to me, if we can't have a long-term vision of healthy, safe, clean, and parks for families, then you're going to see families are doing what is happening now. They're going to other jurisdictions and driving away from their own cities and not biking to their own parks or not walking to their own parks. That goes contrary to our climate goals, goes contrary to our community goals of what we want to see in our community, goes contrary to even just the healthy nature of it. But to do that, part of our CIP conversation needs to be, what do we want our parks for the next five years? Those kids that are going to be born this year should have a park that they can go to in the next five years. So that's one I wanted to-- again, I think it's a good thing that we're having that on this, but the bathrooms are a critical one, and figuring out how to keep them maintained and opened. The second, on the transportation piece, you know, one thing that I'd like to want to again thank the staff for committing to Vision Zero with the limited dollars that we do have to making sure that we have safety on our streets, that we're looking at bike infrastructure. But I think it's important that whether it's through the CIP or through our transportation operation budget, that we also start having a conversation with the public about what it means to not have a local transportation match. And many folks that I've talked to over the last, you know, few weeks, including in the town hall, didn't know that we couldn't draw down our state share of tax revenue for roads without a local match. So it's important that I think that if we're ever going to, one, not only fix the potholes, but then redesign our streets so that they're safe to be able to ride to that park and have a-- an opportunity to actually get out of your vehicle, we need to have that conversation moving forward. And the last piece, I'll say, is that as we're moving through to try to meet those challenges and climate goals for our city, one thing I didn't see in here, and it was discussed earlier, is our infrastructure for meeting the state's advanced clean fleets regulation. So we need to have that conversation. There isn't even a-- I haven't seen a MYOP included in either the CIP or the general fund budget to start having the conversation about what does our five-year infrastructure plan look at, meeting our advanced clean fleets. So those aren't necessarily changes that I think we may be able to do now, but in this particular item. But I think that by not discussing them or setting ourselves up want to not meet those requirements that are coming quickly. And two, I think particularly when it comes to the parks, that's like the most forward-facing thing that is in our community. It has to be there for the families. So let me stop there, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if the city manager has questions or comments or--
I just have a few comments. I'll have the staff chime in, too. Maybe Jackie, during your presentation, you can talk about the park maintenance piece because the reality is that as we build more parks, we don't have a lot of maintenance dollars to go along with it. So we just spread that out amongst the notebooks.
I'm not asking about building more parks. I'm asking to build more bathrooms in current parks.
We will have an opportunity to have that discussion as well with this full council. With regard to the transportation and climate, I'll take those things together. We've had with our SECOG board members had a conversation about a greater local match opportunity by making sure, I know that we can't do it formally, it's illegal, but I've had conversations with SECOG Corliss, James Corliss, the executive director, to figure out how we can get a greater share so that we have local match to pull down some of these grants. Because absent that, you're right, we're not doing these projects. So I would encourage the folks on SECOG here to really force that issue this year with SECOG.
So.
NSTA, thank you.
Let me, I'd like to pick up where the Vice Mayor left off here a little bit and it is, you know, we could talk about park maintenance where I know some of our leading council members, I know Councilmember Telemontes, Mayor Protem Vang and others in the community are talking about how we might find a sustained source of funding for park maintenance. But we could have the same discussion as we are about transportation, about climate. It crosses over and what I think the Vice Mayor is getting at is the fact that we don't have a sustained form of local funding and local finance for a lot of opportunities that present themselves at the state and federal level. I could broaden it a little bit because it's a discussion that we've had for six years here. Even with Measure U, which has a lot of it, as we'll demonstrate in the weeks ahead, has in fact gone to the community and to different forms of inclusive economic development. We don't have, with the exception of maybe now the TOT tax for tourism, we don't have a sustained form of funding for economic development, for capital improvement. And I think it's made, you talk about priority setting, colleagues, Mr. City Manager, as, you know, we map out the next several years, I would maintain that this challenge is a core city priority to figure out how we are going to be creative about levers to be able to draw down more state and federal money for the things that the community and we rightfully want to provide. We try a lot of, I won't even call them workarounds. We call them, we try a lot of creativity. We try with the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, which we're doing down on Stockton Boulevard and we're doing in the rail yards and of course, we're awaiting the final report on a central citywide EIFD. I wonder as well, this is one that I would like, if it's possible, to have some more discussion report back on. The city does have already some existing bond indebtedness, so to speak, right? In various parts of the budget. At some point, I think it'd be helpful for the public and for especially new colleagues to know, at what point do we pay off that debt? And does that then free up additional capacity so that we might think about a general obligation bond, you know, backed up by city assets? We've been through this analysis a lot after the passage of Measure U and our treasurer said to us, well, tough economic times here, we went through COVID, et cetera, we don't want to issue more debt. Okay. That may change, but then what is the pace at which we are paying off any of our existing capital improvement debts? And if we're paying it off, does that then leave more room to be able to invest in a citywide park bathroom program or a citywide bikeway expansion or more active climate investment on the capital side? This is a priority because it's about how we build our city from inside out and I think it's really an important discussion because what this report, which rather thin report this year, says that we don't have a lot of money really to do more capital improvement and there's a lot of need and a lot of ambition. Can we get that report back on? That's what I would like to see is the, Lani, you know the answer? When are we paying off any existing debt and does that free up capacity to do other things?
So Mayor, honestly, I went and did the research because I thought I had recollected that we paid something off either in 2028 or 2032. However, unfortunately, on the general fund side, because we did a refinancing in 2015, we sucked up all that capacity. We don't pay anything off in a meaningful nature that retires enough debt to issue debt. I don't think we pay anything off in the next five to 10-year period, but we will get to that information because I was, I was looking for resources and it's not there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, paying off existing debt is just one strategy. We're thinking, you know, use these state tools aggressively because the hunger is there and it doesn't matter. You could be, it could be about external investments into economic development. It could be city capital improvement projects as well, but the need is still great. Yep? Who wants to talk? Oh, you do. You're, well, I was almost done. You're next.
Appreciate that. Thank you. The conversation took a different turn than I was expecting, so I'll add a little editorial because I do believe YIPSY was working on a fee update, a development impact fee update. And it was a startling update because costs to acquire and maintain land had gone up so much. But I do think that when we're looking at tools and mechanisms that we should be examining, that that has to be on the table. You know, I understand the concerns that the development community raises and we talk about increasing fees, but these parks are part of what make the communities great and is part of how we serve the existing community that was already there. So I really want to make sure that that stays on the table. I don't know, I know it was tabled last year. I don't know if it's ever planning on coming back, but I do think that's a conversation we should be having because we know how passionate our community is about parks. And that brings me to some of the District 4 investments in here. I know that the park development fees are allocated geographically, so it's not like we can say, oh, we're going to go to a bathroom over Granite Regional Park because this is money generated geographically. And so I've weighed out really heavily because as you heard from one of my constituents and if you saw my inbox, you'd see about 100 other emails to this effect. The fact that the South Side Park Pool is going to be closed until we finish allocating funding for the full repairs is a real issue for the central city where the income wage is still $35,000 a year and where most of our backyards don't have pools. We're an older neighborhood. And when you think about the public housing right across the street, you know, I'm texting folks right now who are like, absolutely, that is our top priority is to get that pool open as quickly as possible. So I have a few requests for city staff that aren't going to be popular with some folks, but that's okay with me because we need to figure this out and I want to respect that we have a set amount of resources. So I can't manufacture money. I wish I could. I know last week I had talked about putting this potentially in the CDPG consideration for federal funding. I'd also like to ask staff to consider moving the Fremont Park Bathroom renovation and the shed demolition items to the South Side Park Pool Repair Fund. That would be just about $500,000. And then it breaks my heart to do this, but I have talked to one of the resident leaders who has concurred with this idea. We, this council had allocated a couple of years ago, $2.5 million to CV Circle after we lost a young person to gun violence for improvements and part of that improvement plan was $400,000 to build a new park facility on the south side of their neighborhood. We would like to reallocate that funding over to the South Side Park Improvements as well. And then there was an additional $100,000 that we'd allocated for community events. We don't want to allocate all of that. We'd still like to keep some of that for community events. My office is committing to fundraise or pay for the stuff we had committed to with that 100K, but we'd also like to put some of that 100K into the park fund as well. So by my math, that should be just over $1 million that we will have of new money towards the South Side Park Pool repairs and a commitment, I know from my office and the South Side Park Neighborhood Association to explore gifts to share accounts and whatever we can do to help fundraise for the additional gap so we can get that pool reopened as quickly as possible. I think most of your districts have at least one pool that's open this summer. We will have none in District 4 this year and so that's why we're taking these somewhat drastic steps to say, you know, it's real important to me that these kids and these families have a place to cool off, especially given the anticipated temperatures this year. So I'd love to put that forward and maybe work with you city manager and your team on that.
So we'll do a report back following with the budget update for the approved.
Will include it in, if it is the will of the council that those changes be reflected, we'll include it in the May 30 item that goes to budget and not at those changes, the redirection of dollars.
With one caveat, these projects that you listed off, we may have spent some money initiating some of these projects already and so it'll be net of whatever the spend was.
No, I appreciate that. And some of these projects like the Fremont Park Bathroom have been on the list since 2017. So I know there's been some money here and there spent and this is a delay, not an ask to remove it from the project queue, but just saying, you know, let's just bump the funding back and use funding this year. So, yeah, and that's why I caveated that these development fees have to be spent geographically. I was just texting my staff to make sure. So this isn't money that can really move outside of the central city, so I hope it's something that you all would consider supporting so that we can reprioritize those resources to where they're more urgently needed.
Yeah, we'll absolutely bring that back and this is just not for this item, for the next one, but I know Mayor Protem's going to bring this up. It's also an opportunity with Measure L funding too, to talk about pools, parks and the like along with all the other pieces within Measure L.
You, well, your request does beg, I think, a broader question, which is another way to look at funding is to just ask the question, are there projects which are a priority but maybe aren't as large a priority today as they were three, five, seven years ago when they were funded? We can't afford to not ask those kinds of questions, right? Because if in reality, a project for a variety of reasons is not going to happen, at least in a timely way, and there's X hundred thousand dollars sitting in that capital improvement account or more, I think it's reasonable for the members certainly, but all of us to ask that question. So some form of an analysis there about how much money is sitting in long-held CIPs that, for whatever reason, the projects just aren't coming to fruition.
Well, it's a catch-22 because some of these projects are multi-year because of the size of the project and the costs.
Yeah.
That you have to accumulate over time, but absolutely, we can have that conversation. In fact, in the weeks to come, actually some for you this week, we're going to start this priority setting discussion and interviews and each of the council members will have an opportunity to weigh in on some of the things that are important to them within their district. We can weave that into a more broad discussion publicly about what priorities need to look like.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. We're done with that item. Let's now move to the proposed budget for the Department of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, otherwise known as YIPSY. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Mayor and Council, Jackie Beecham, Director of the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department. The item before you is YIPSY's FY 2324 Proposed Budget. We did bring this item to our Parks and Community Enrichment Commission on May 4th, so I'd like to thank them for their support of our proposed budget and also thank our team for putting this budget together in collaboration with our finance department and the city's management team. So our proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is $63.5 million. It funds 742 FTE, which equates to 331 full-time and approximately 1,400 part-time and seasonal employees in our department. The modifications that you're seeing from the current fiscal year to our proposed fiscal year are covered by increased revenues and expenditure offsets, and I'll explain those in a little bit more detail as we go through the presentation. This proposed budget supports the delivery of services through our parks, programs and recreation facilities at the current service levels that you're seeing today. So YIPSY's budget is administered through six main areas of operation and supports our goals of creating pathways for youth development, quality parkland and recreation facilities, lifelong recreation and learning and community livability in strong neighborhoods. All of these areas deliver core services that address major quality of life issues across the city. That includes youth development, safe spaces for our youth and families and our more vulnerable populations to create a sense of community across the city. They also touch on the impacts of homelessness and ways for us to address climate change that I also will talk about a little bit more. So proposed changes will help to right-size the department budget and operations and result in a $1 million reduction in net costs from this current fiscal year to the proposed fiscal year. This includes a revenue adjustment of $1.6 million as we are returning to pre-pandemic service levels with increased program participation. Facility rentals and special events were continuing to see a significant increase since coming out of the pandemic. There are 4.18 FTE cost-neutral add-deletes to allow us to realign program and operational needs. We are consolidating several of our vacant part-time positions that have been more difficult for us to fill to offset positions that will better support our aquatic facility maintenance and operations and also the management of Clooney Community Center and Shepherd Garden and Art Center that we recently reassumed operations of. Also included in this budget is a $228,000 very baseline maintenance and fire abatement for Del Rio Trail and also maintenance of the Class 1 bikeway that's to come. This expenditure is also offset by the revenue increase adjustment already noted. This proposed budget also includes a fourth R revenue and expenditure adjustment in the amount of $2.2 million as we're seeing childcare participation levels increase and a citywide fleet and contract and labor adjustments of approximately $2.6 million. Also as a result, we've already talked about this this afternoon, as with the increased CIP demand that we're experiencing, our Park Planning and Development Services section is adding three new positions to sustain the high level of CIP project delivery. And all of these positions are funded, are covered by the deletion of a vacant FTE and increased project offsets. So moving on to our Administration Services section, this team is made up of eight full-time staff and directly supports YIPSY's budget and fiscal services, human resources, procurement and the administrative operations. This team manages over $34 million in grant program projects and various lease agreements. This includes our citywide golf operations and the Sacramento Horsemen's Association, among many other facilities. This team also supports various commissions, including our Parks Commission and our Gifts to Share organization. Our Park Safety Team is comprised of 13 park safety staff. This team is responsible for the service, safety and preservation of all 235 parks as of last week. We just added another park, city parks, bike trails, aquatics facilities and our community centers. Our park rangers operate from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 365 days per year. We average three rangers on shift at one time and they respond to over 3,000 calls for service each year. The Park Safety Team works collaboratively with other city staff and departments to respond to the impacts of homelessness that we've been experiencing in our parks. They also lead cleanup efforts at many of our parks and open spaces citywide. Park Safety Staff, important to share here, were first on scene to critical incidents very recently involving car accidents, water rescues and crisis situations that happened in and around our parks, where our team's quick action and response resulted in eight lives being saved on eight separate occasions. The youth workforce development, civic engagement and expanded learning units include 74 full-time staff and 672 part-time and seasonal staff. Annually, over 800 young people participate in workforce development programs that many of you are familiar with, like our Landscape and Learning Program, Young Leaders of Tomorrow, Primetime Teen. And we average over a $1 million investment directly in the hands of young people through our salary and stipend programs. Our civic engagement unit supports, provides support for the Sacramento Youth Commission that represent the youth voice of Sacramento, and they also support the Summer at City Hall program. This year, Summer at City Hall is on track to accept 90 participants in the upcoming program, nearly doubling our participation from last year. This unit also delivers the city's Fourth R program. That's a year-round licensed childcare program. It serves over 2,000 youth annually at 19 locations all across the city, providing that critical support for working families. We also partner with Child Action to remove some barriers for families in need so that they have access to quality childcare. Also in this unit is our expanding learning programs and that includes START and our Middle School ACES program. These programs receive grant dollars and support over 2,000 youth each year in the before and after-school environment. The Community Enrichment Section includes 100 full-time staff and 562, excuse me, 65 seasonal and part-time staff. They support a variety of programs for residents of all ages and abilities across the city. This includes our community centers where we provide several free programs and access to safe space for over 6,500 youth and teens in. in-person, after-school programs, summer camps, preschool programs, teen events. Last year, we saw, this last year, we've seen a 62% increase in those youth and teen programs that I just mentioned. Our community centers also host special events. That was, definitely saw a significant increase coming out of the pandemic with over 10,000 families that visit our centers for some of these special event opportunities. And of course, our centers provide essential programs and services for our older adults. Participation in these programs has increased significantly. That includes our Meals on Wheels program that so far has served over 8,500 seniors in the city, our, our daily walk programs that Mayor Pro Tem Bing supports us with. In addition to the direct program delivery, YIPSY works closely with many of our youth-serving nonprofits and community partners that utilize our community centers to provide programs and services. So far this year, we've, we've waived over $200,000 in rental fees this fiscal year through the council-approved Fee Waiver and Fee Reduction Program. Our community centers also support emergency response efforts for our more vulnerable populations, including extreme weather and hazardous air quality events. We work in collaboration with the Office of Emergency Management and other community partners. We've coordinated multiple activations and provided mutual aid and support in disaster and emergency situations at community centers across the city. We've already had a robust discussion around our aquatics facilities. The Aquatics Section operates 17 pools in our regional aquatics complex citywide. We have over 100,000 visits to our Recreation Swim Program each season. Other programs include swim lessons, water safety classes, swim team lifeguarding, fitness classes, and special events. This year, again, significant impact on our youth and, and young people across the city, we awarded over $30,000 in Swim Safe Scholarships to youth across Sacramento. That included free swim lessons and lifeguard scholarships. Our Older Adult Services Section operates the Hart Senior Center, provides opportunities for our older adult community, as well as social connections for those age 50 and better. This team also provides our Triple R program, which is respite for more than 80 families and caregivers through this Licensed Adult Day program for older adults with dementia, and we have three locations across the city. We issue over 200, excuse me, over, we issue permits for over 12,000 youth across our 235 parks through permitted sports field play in this last year, and also issued over 350 event, special event permits citywide. This unit's also home of our Access Leisure and Adaptive Sports Program for youth and adults, youth, adults, and teens with disabilities, and of course, the beloved Camp Sacramento that many of you are aware of. Our Park Maintenance Team is supported by 125 full-time park maintenance employees and 10 seasonal park maintenance workers. They are responsible for the daily care and maintenance of the city's 235 developed parks, community gardens, bike trails, and open spaces that spans over 4,000 acres, and that are used daily by youth and families citywide. Our current funding for staff levels provides only for the very basic landscape services and general upkeep, the concept of mow, blow, and go. Our team does much more than that, I'm sure you're aware. In addition to those daily maintenance functions, including landscaping, restrooms, trash cleanup, staff respond to over 2,600 301 requests each fiscal year for additional services of, or matters of special concern, including safety, environmental sustainability, litter removal, and vandalism. Important to note as well, we've alluded to this a little bit in previous discussions, but our current staffing levels equate to approximately one staff member for every 32 acres of parkland. And for reference, in 2017, that was one person for every 25 acres. In 2009, that was one person for every 15 acres. Also, in this fiscal year, we've taken on the additional responsibility of five new parks, new community gardens, and of course, the treasured McKinley Rose Garden. Our Park Planning and Development Services Team includes 14 full-time staff. They deliver millions of dollars in park projects that directly support access to safe space in our parks and facilities across the city. Staffing is funded through CIP budgets and PIF and Quimby funds. So far this year, our Park Planning Team has delivered over $10 million in citywide projects with over 62 active projects valued at $32 million. I'll share some more of these projects on the next slide. We've already, you've already heard in an earlier presentation about the additional capital improvement projects for the upcoming fiscal year that will prioritize health and safety and help improve the quality of life for young people and families, including South Side Park and Pool improvements, restroom improvements, and the Megan, Mangan Park Clubhouse. So YIPSY has been diligently addressing the deferred maintenance burden. We completed over $6 million in deferred maintenance this fiscal year. Our total deferred maintenance still exceeds over $130 million, but it continues to be an area of focus for our teams, securing grants, using any surplus funds at the remainder of each fiscal year that we are able to carry over to address priority projects per council resolution. This last year, we carried over $4.7 million to apply to deferred maintenance projects, again prioritizing safety issues and, and benefiting any of our disadvantaged communities. Some of the recently completed and/or planned projects for this fiscal year include, and we have some photos to share, the Regency Park, Regency Park Pump Track. We just had a ribbon cutting for our Hagenwood All-Weather Sports Field replacement last week with Councilmember Loloey. Mama Mart Splash Pad Conversion is scheduled to be completed in time to open next summer. Very excited to bring that splash pad back online. Renovations at Nielsen and Lawrence Park, and then McClatchy Pool Surfacing that's currently underway. Councilmember Maple got to tour that site with us last week. And then we're also looking forward to replacing our Pennell Pool Heater and Pump Replacement to be able to expand water safety opportunities beyond the summer season. So before we move on to highlights and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year, we'd like to share a high-level overview of the implementation timeline for Measure L or the Sacramento Children's Fund, excuse me. We've identified a work group of six staff with extensive youth development background and training from both our department, YIPSY, and the Office of Youth Development that is now working alongside our team. They are currently finalizing an RFP for a Strategic Planning Consultant to be solicited within the next couple of weeks and selected sometime between August and September, possibly sooner. We're developing a staffing plan to oversee the implementation of the Children's Fund, and we will begin recruitment for these positions at the same time that we are conducting the solicitation for the consultant. After the Planning and Oversight Commission is seated this summer, they will begin working on the five-year strategic investment plan with support from staff and of course, the Strategic Planning Consultant. The Planning and Oversight Committee will also consult and collaborate directly with members of the Sacramento Youth Commission through the strategic planning process, ensuring that youth voice is incorporated throughout and youth-centered metrics are used to measure outcomes. The strategic planning process will be completed by the spring of 2024, and the final five-year investment plan will come to this council for approval and then implementation by July of 2024, per language in Measure L. So I wanted to touch on a handful of highlights. I know I've already covered quite a bit, but a few more items to share. YIPSY invests, or this last year has invested, over $24.5 million in youth ages 0 to 24 through direct programs, direct program delivery and partnerships with some of our nonprofit organizations and community care holders. Direct programs and services have all been mentioned tonight, including many of our workforce development programs, our free after-school programs, aquatics programs and swim lessons, and access to free wellness rooms, and our community centers, family special events, and many more. Also excited to share that our Older Adult Services Program expanded this year in our community centers and at Hart Senior Center, really to respond to the social isolation that was experienced during the COVID pandemic. We saw 44, 44% increase in senior visits to our drop-in programming across centers, and again, a 61% increase in our meal programs for seniors. Also really proud of our Triple R team. Some of them are here right now. They were selected as a Model Licensed Adult Day program. They received a grant to address the health and well-being of older adults and their caregivers, and also to support the advancement of health equity. So really proud to be recognized as a model program for dementia care services. Also this year, to address disparities, we brought this to one of our committees earlier this year, that YIPSY developed Sacramento's first GIS Park Amenity Equity Lens Dashboard. It's a mapping tool to analyze park amenity data through an equity lens. This mapping tool allows us to better understand the overall distribution of amenities in relation to under-resourced communities. And the equity scores will help to determine if a particular field, park, space, has a high potential to serve an under-resourced community and ensure that the investments that we're making in our field maintenance are made equitably. You're also probably aware that we're in the final stages of our, of developing our Parks Plan 2040. This plan will identify the community's vision and priorities for the next 20 years as they relate to all of our parks and facilities, youth development investments, recreation and community enrichment. We recently completed a prioritization survey, our Parks Plan consultant did, and confirmed that the majority of our residents, majority of our residents rate the quality of life in Sacramento positively, and indicated that parks and recreation is important to the overall quality of life. This year, we also completed our first full year of operations at North Natomas Community Center and Aquatics Complex, where we posted thousands of youth and families citywide and also across the region with water safety, recreation, and community programs and events. Also very pleased to share that North Natomas Community Center and Aquatic Center received the CPRS State Award of Excellence for Facility Design, which we'll be bringing back to council with Councilwoman Kaplan in a few weeks. This year, YIPSY reassumed operations at the Clooney Community Center, Shepherd Garden and Art Center, and the Memorial Rose Garden. That happened in December of '22, after 10 years of being operated by a nonprofit. Our team came together to support a seamless transition so the community could continue utilizing these spaces. We used existing resources to keep these facilities open and have even expanded programs and offerings at both of those facilities. And then lastly, at the end of 2022, we all recall, and coming into early '23, the storms. So our park maintenance staff took on additional emergency maintenance responsibilities following a series of devastating storms. It destroyed 191 trees in our parks, damaged an additional 406 trees, and the destruct, and the destruction of an estimated $430,000 worth of park infrastructure. Our park maintenance staff is currently in the restoration and replanting phase of storm response, and they've dedicated over 4,600 hours directly to storm So a few objectives for the upcoming fiscal year. We will prioritize continuing to expand access to programs and services that support youth and workforce development, safety, health, and mental wellness through the direct program delivery, training, and partnerships with our community care holders. This will also include the implementation of the Sacramento Children's Fund. We look forward to completing our Parks Plan 2040 for approval and adoption by the end of this year, and will begin the preliminary stages of our department's strategic plan development as we consider strategies for implementation over the next five years. We will also continue to develop the Equity Lens Dashboard to include additional park amenities and eventually facilities, so it can play a key role in the allocation of resources and investments. YIPSY is also committed to ensuring that diversity, equity, and inclusion are integrated into all of our decisions, services, practices, policies, and procedures. We will continue to review our operations and processes with an equity lens and utilize tools like the dashboard that support equity and fairness. This will include a review of many of our practices and policies, including our process for, our inclusion process for participation in some of our programs and our sports field allocation guidelines. You've also heard tonight, this afternoon, we will continue to prioritize deferred maintenance for our park and facility improvements. We'll seek creative strategies for funding and growing, our growing backlog of deferred maintenance. And through our recent Parks Plan prioritization survey that I mentioned, residents do strongly support, support us making investments in these improvements over new investments. This last year, park maintenance managed over 18,000 hours of volunteer hours in our parks. By formalizing a department-wide volunteer program that involves our youth, we will be able to make a significant impact on the quality of our parks and programs while also creating opportunities for youth engagement and community stewardship. We will also keep at the forefront our efforts to support climate and sustainability. This will include our community centers serving as cooling and respite centers for our at-risk populations and our general public. The Sam and Bonnie Pennell Community Center just received grant funds to be upgraded as a resilience hub to provide resources for the community due to the impacts of climate change. This will be an opportunity to use that facility as a model for optimizing other YIPSY facilities as resilient centers across the city. Our maintenance and planning teams will continue to focus on the protection, maintenance, and sustainability, also expansion of Sacramento's urban forest, with an emphasis in our passive landscape areas and many of our under-canopied areas. Our park maintenance team has a very ambitious goal of increasing the tree canopy by 20% in the next 10 years, so we will be able to support them in doing that. And we will also continue to implement strategies for water conservation in partnership with our Department of Utilities that will include upgrades to our plumbing fixtures, irrigation systems, and turf conversions. And again, I know a key priority for this council and also for our department will be to pursue joint use agreements and opportunities and other collaborative relationships with school districts and community partners to best serve our youth and families through our parks and recreation facilities. And then lastly, with the realignment of staffing, as we continue to recover from the pandemic, we are going to focus our efforts on creative recruitment and retention strategies. We really want to prioritize taking care of our people. All of the teams that I've shared with you today, you'll hear I refer to them as people, not FTE. They are people. Many of them are here with us today. And they are responsible for keeping our parks and facilities clean. They provide safe spaces for our youth, adults, and seniors and families to enjoy all the benefits of our parks and recreation. So with that, here's a photo of just a handful of our staff, but I think we have several staff in the audience today as well. Happy that many of our park maintenance team, wow, a lot of you are able to join us. Quite the surprise. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. Let's take the public testimony first, and then I'll turn it to the members.
Thank you, Mayor. I have seven speakers. The first is Mac Worthy, then Marnie Ledger, and Christina Rogers. Mac Worthy?
Calling Mr. Worthy is Marnie Ledger.
People, we're Parks and Recreation. I have John Lewis, which is their dog, Worship, is the founder of Sacramento Park Recreation. That's at the Hagenwood area. Okay, now, when we talk about nonprofit organizations, can I go to you and get that address to those nonprofit organizations that run in the neighborhood? We need some audit here. We want to know how many those people in the neighborhood gets a grant from nonprofits and who they hire on those bases of nonprofits. How often do you question their agenda and their finances? We also want to know that when you was putting that together, were any people from the neighborhood involved in you putting that together? It's reading charts is not, is very easy, but did any neighborhood input was there? That's the strategy to teach. Also, your public works. Now, you talk about the trees. Now, there's a lot of garbage in public works, and I can show you that garbage. Now, the young man that's here, you could take the public work and show them how to use a chainsaw. It don't have to have a warrant supervised when a tree fall, because the trees in California don't have a tap root. They, the wind will blow them down because you sit on a hard pane. Understand where you are. None of them comes since trained those boys. You got a program, take a boy, fix it. People, the reason that I pushed to what I said, could I get this up on?
Please continue. I'm working on it.
Originally, I do that. I been here. I saw the canvases. I oppose that. The mayor said, well, we give you opportunity. This is what killing us.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Marnie Ledger, then Christina Rogers.
I'll pick up there tonight.
Yeah, I want to go back to the funding, and I appreciate Councilmember Valens Will and, and other council members who give her support on finding funding. and, and other council members who give her support on finding funding. I know it's difficult. Three sources that I'd like to mention, the park development impact fees. I hope direction is given to building department not to give so many waivers to developers. These fees are essential to support our parks. Another source is special event fees. Southside Park is the favorite place for so many organizations. Almost every weekend in the summer, there are huge fees. They should be spent in the park where the event is going on. Negative impacts are huge, not only for our park, but for the residents around them whose driveways, like mine, are always impacted by events. The third funding source, our Southside Park Neighborhood Organization is waiting approval for a 501(c)(3) that will help supplement pool funding and youth programs. And just like to mention the incredible support our neighborhood gives to Southside Park. We have planted over 80 trees in the last four years in the park, paid for, not by parks, but with the cooperation of the Sacramento Tree Foundation. Thanks, Ray T. Rethaway. And we watered those trees for two years. That's our commitment. We also have monthly park cleanups where we get 20, 30 people. We clean up around the tennis courts throughout the whole park. And so this is a big maintenance issue that helps the city. So we're doing our part in the neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
And thank you all for supporting us.
Our next speaker is Christina Rogers, then Doug Osi, and then I have four people online.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Christina Rogers, and I'm the current president of the Land Park Community Association. And every year, the LPCA Board meets to agree on goals and objectives for the year. One of our key objectives this year is to help raise the quality of life in Williamland Regional Park. This includes maintenance, upgrades and public safety. We're very appreciative of our councilman, Rick Jennings. He's committed to these efforts, and we look forward to engaging with him and his staff to support positive changes in Land Park grounds. Yet there are some things he can only achieve if the budget allows, and I'd like to provide feedback on the critical items that should be in the park's budget. Number one, are you increasing city parks maintenance staff? Sacramento has around 280 parks. Cleaning up the level of trash left around Williamland Park daily could be a full-time job alone. The city has relied on dedicated volunteer groups like the Land Park Volunteer Corps more than they should, and volunteers should not be expected to take over the work of paid employees to keep our park adequately maintained. Park maintenance needs more support from the city. Number two, will you provide better tools for park maintenance to do their job? Even things as simple as low-grade paintbrushes make repainting signs challenging. Can you ask the maintenance crew what they need and help in better, providing better quality necessities? Also, I see nothing about increasing our park rangers. I understand we have three rangers per shift, like the presentation said. That's what we have to patrol around our city. 280 Sacramento parks. This is not acceptable and sets hard-working rangers up to fail. Public safety is in all our parks, should be a priority. Their presence helps mitigate the trouble. Also, I hear body cameras have been purchased for them but are currently in storage. Since they are already purchased, please follow up with the LPCA on when you will put them to use. These cameras can make a difference in court cases involving a park. Finally, park rangers help hold drivers in the park accountable, and we, like other parks, have a speeding problem on Land Park Drive that runs from the park right into the neighborhood. Several neighbors have almost been hit or their cars have been hit in the area.
Your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Doug Osi, and then I have four speakers online.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to speak about the Parks Operations Budget for Maintenance. The city has applied for and received a state grant in the amount of $3.2 million to rehabilitate Renfree Field. After the fact, in other words, when you've finished that project, you have represented to the state in the course of that grant application that you have the funds necessary to maintain that project, which I estimate, based on my experience, to be $10,000 to $15,000 per month. I bring this to your attention because, given the dialogue that occurred earlier about the constraints on the park's budget, park department's budget, it's clear that there is a shortage of funds necessary to do everything everybody wants. If you proceed with this project at Del Paso, you are inadvertently, in my opinion, reducing the amount of funding you have available for the other parks in your respective districts. Now, it's clear to me from listening to today's dialogue that many of you have been to those parks in your districts, and you know that the maintenance, for financial reasons, has not been satisfactory. We've heard about bathrooms and what have you. I'm here to ask you to not proceed with the project in Del Paso Park. It will benefit your districts by providing greater resources to maintain the parks elsewhere in the city. My dad told me, taught me over many years, he beat it into me, sometimes the best deals you make are the ones you don't. I'd urge you to not proceed with this project at Del Paso Park for the financial reasons I've articulated. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sierra Boone.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Sierra, and I live in Oak Park. I'm also an at-large Parks and Community Enrichment Commissioner, and wanted to begin with a big thank you to the YPSY team. My family and I enjoy McClatchy and Curtis Park almost every morning. I support this agenda item and hope that the city makes every effort to increase support for the hard-working individuals that keep the parks green, safe and clean. Our maintenance teams and rangers and the administrative staff make a huge difference day in, day out, and without their continued commitment and dedication, our communities would greatly suffer. Thank you for hearing my comments today.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I, I wanted to say that I've been studying YPSY for a while, because I remember growing up here, YPSY was very active in Del Paso Heights. I don't remember too many people talking about being bored, because we had so much to do, and a lot of the, of our parents and grandparents came from the deep south, so they weren't going to allow their children and grandchildren to be idle. And that's what's impressive about YPSY. I'm, I'm also going to be studying if YPSY was involved in helping the Grant Drum Line go to Europe, because there's a big budget down there, and big budget in the city manager's office that I study, like I'm trying to get a degree. And there's a lot of money there, and they, they strained to get to the finish line, but because of people like Mayor Steinberg and, and City Councilman LaLolli and some other people that do not want to be mentioned, because I know who all helped them, because I'm a huge advocate for the teenagers in Del Paso Heights. They're winning state championships, they're traveling throughout the world, and no scandals. What other part of the city can say that? These are teenagers, so the money should be put where the, the progress is, and we need to get that pool open, YPSY, if you can, if you have a role to play, because it's going to be another hot summer, and those teenagers are not going to have anywhere to swim in Del Paso Heights, and that never happened when I was growing up there. There would have been protests behind that. That's cruel and unusual punishment to not have them to have somewhere to go, swim. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is D5 Residence.
Hey, everybody. I'm Matt King over in District 5. I support this budget. The one thing I would like to see, and I don't know if it's added, I came on call a little bit late, is possibly some kind of budget for block cameras at some of the parks. I think it would also pay for itself as an offset cost in the lack of rangers that we have, because it would be able to read license plates and catch people in the act of things. And also, you know, if you have a recipe that takes six eggs to make, and you only have three, well, your recipe ain't going to come out that good. It'll still be cookies, but it's not going to taste the same. So if you're going one guy for 32 acres, and then one guy for 25, and one guy for 15, I'm saying you can make the same recipe, but it's not going to turn out as good. So I agree, we should keep the money into the parks we have, and, you know, let's, let's get some more rangers out here, because we're not in the time. And I'd also like to see programs, like when I was younger, there was a couple of youth aides at every park, and they would have games and things to do, and it would be from like 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, and there was things to do before they opened up the waiting pools and the swimming pools. So those kind of programs, I think, are beneficial to communities. And like you said, if the pools aren't open, well, these kids are going to go swim in that river, and they're taking a chance, because there's no lifeguards out there, and the river's moving really fast. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Monica Ruelde, Mayors. Monica, if you'll unmute. Monica, if you'll unmute. We can hear you now, Monica?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to first give a shout out to the park maintenance staff that's in the audience, because as my nephew, I've always appreciated the work that they do to maintain our green spaces. And so with that, I just want to say that my comments are, or actually, should I say, my questions are for Shannon and the YPSY staff. So after reviewing the proposed budget document for YPSY that was posted ahead of today's meeting, I noticed that there wasn't any mention of the Measure L Sacramento Children's Fund, but I do appreciate it being mentioned during your presentation, and if that slide deck could be shared publicly, I would definitely appreciate access to it, if I can review the implementation timeline. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that when voters pass Measure L, we recognize the need for an expanded city infrastructure to implement the Sacramento Children's Fund. In the measure, it's written that the city can spend up to 20% of the fund on administrative activities in the first year. So with that, my question to Shannon and the YPSY staff is, do you have a plan in place on how you might spend this 20% you have for administrative funds via Measure L? And if so, what is that exact dollar amount? Because I know that the cannabis BOT has already also been shared publicly, so given the presentation you just gave, it sounds like there are plans to hire consultants, which is great, and would definitely appreciate hearing more about that process as the public budget discussions continue throughout this month into June. So thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, let's turn it over to the members of the City Council, start with Mayor Protem Vang.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and if the public is listening, Monica, if you're listening, the Parks Director is Jackie Beecham, so I just want to make sure to announce, to say that. But first, let me just say thank you, Jackie, so much, and the entire YPSY and Finance Department for getting us to this moment. I know it was a lot of hard work, working with the Finance Department to get us to this moment, probably some no from Howard, because there's requests from all the departments, and Howard is going to have to make those tough decisions so that you could bring forth a budget proposal. And so I want to say thank you for being thoughtful and intentional about just the budget adjustment in YPSY. And then I also want to give a shout out to all of our staff, just for your heart and hustle, day in and day out, working with our youth, our families, our seniors. You know, I participate in our walking program. Every Monday, I'm at Pinell Community Center, walking with our seniors. We started with four or five folks, and now we have 20-plus, plus folks walking in our program. And so I do see the impact that our YPSY department and our parks are making every day on, on the lives of Sacramento residents, so I want to say thank you. I do have a few comments, questions, and I also have some direction, Mayor, on a few items. First, I had some comments just really around our parks, and I think there's definitely a consensus from all of us, from the community and the public, that we know that if we're able to improve our pools and our parks, we're able to create healthier and stronger neighborhoods and really improve the quality of life. Something I want to highlight and lift up that Jackie shared was the recently developed GIS, GIS mapping tool to analyze park amenity data through an equity lens. You know, I think it's easy to definitely call out the gaps and challenges, but also I want to shine a light on things that we're doing that I think is a win in our city, and I want to just say thank you to staff for creating this tool, because I think it's really important. There's a lot of competing needs, but it's important for us to have data and to look at which park needs maintenance, so that we could really be more tailored about how we allocate resources. And so I'm excited that the tool is now created. I know it came to the racial equity committee as well, and really looking forward to it being actually implemented, right? We have a tool, but now it's about actually implementing the tool so that we can have a better understanding of allocation in our amenities. I don't know how the tool's being currently used in our budget process, right? We just created it, but I like to see the tool be part of the conversation when we're discussing allocation for different parks. So that's the piece. We created the tool, but it's really about the implementation of the tool. So wanted just to provide perhaps direction, maybe it's a briefing to all the council members, but having a better understanding of how we're going to use this tool in the future during the budget process, because I think that's really important. Something I also want to mention around parks is that, as you heard earlier, there is absolutely dire needs in many of our parks throughout our city, and as the mayor shared, the larger issue here is really our budget, right? There are constraints. Our parks and pools have incredible needs. Really appreciate Councilmember Valens Will as sharing how some of our parks in our district will be open, but she won't have one that's open at all in her district, and that's something that is really troublesome. But if, if you heard earlier from Jackie's presentation, there's about $137 million in deferred maintenance. This is double the size of what our Parks Department is. So, I mean, that just puts scope of the need in this city, so we could be fighting for different parts of allocation, but if you just look at our deferred maintenance, it's double the size of our parks, right? So we got to figure out the revenue piece. What I want to share is that the reality is that our dollars are tied up, right? And I think it's important for me, for the council, to be very, to be open and transparent about that, right? There are dollars that we can find, but those are probably decimal points dollars, right? And a lot of our dollars are actually tied up in our various departments and contracts, and I just want to call out that PD actually makes up the largest cost via all departments in our budget. And last week, I did remind folks that this council passed a resolution defining public safety to move beyond traditional services, and that resolution, again, really defines and broadened public safety to include programs under YPSY, right? And so I want to make sure to do a friendly reminder about that as we're engaging in conversation today and the next two weeks, that when we think about public safety, it's about funding YPSY. It's about funding our youth and our parks as well, and that is how we can prevent, create healthier young people, and so that we don't end up with what we have today and asking for more police officers, because if you look at our budget again, it's really tied up in, in that department. And so I just wanted to, to put that on record. As you heard from the mayor, it's so important to ensure that we have steady funding, because the majority of our funding is tied up, and we have $137, $137 million in deferred maintenance. And so one direction I do have, because I'm on the budget and audit with Councilmember Talamontes, the mayor, and also Councilmember, Vice Mayor Gera, is that I'm interested in exploring other potential revenue sources. And I think what we need to do is actually have a workshop, perhaps, at Budget and Audit to bring forth to the full council. And so I'm talking about everything on the table, from development fees from developers to a potential park bond. I think that's going to be really important, and we can begin that conversation in Budget and Audit, bring a package perhaps to the full council to debate and consider, and so that we can have really projections on, on potential revenue source that we could bring into the city. And so that's one direction I have. So I think, Laney, you staff us in Budget and Audit, correct? So I want to make sure, Mayor, because I know you're Chair of Budget and Audit, and I think we need to make sure that we agendize really potential revenue sources for the city, because we've heard over and over again that, that that's a need, and so I just wanted to make that direction.
Yeah, no, I think it's a really appropriate discussion for the Budget and Audit Committee, and we'll make sure that we work together, find a date and...
Great, thank you.
...talk about all those, all those revenue options.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. And then lastly, I wanted to just touch a little bit about the youth program. As I've shared before, it's so important that we have a system-wide effort in monitoring all our youth programming, an initiative across our cities, those that we fund directly via departments and also our community partners. I mean, we've heard over and over again from the public that we need to hold our community partners accountable, right? Our CBO has to be in compliance with... Our CBO has to be in compliance with, you know, state and federal regulation, but as a department, we also have to make sure we hold ourselves accountable to ensuring good outcomes. And so I know later on this afternoon at five o'clock, we're going to hear from Fire and Police. You know, they too also have youth programming under their departments as well. And I know that the Office of Youth Development was currently charged in overseeing the citywide efforts, given their work around youth development, their youth development framework and citywide kind of policy expertise. And my understanding is the Office of Youth Development was recently moved under YPSY. And so I wanted just to have a better understanding of how that partnership would look like, given that O I D is now under YPSY. And I want to make sure that we're able to have a system-wide approach. And that question might be directed to Howard, actually.
Yeah, I could answer that question, sure. The fact that we've did some realignment and structurally with the organization doesn't change the mission of O I D. It sits under YPSY. It's, you know, Jackie talked about adding three F T Es in addition to the staff we have right now. We're getting the consultants on board here through R F P. But they're two separate issues. The Measure L Commission is really looking at how to spend this forty percent of the cannabis revenue, currently projected to be eight point eight million dollars. Separate and above that is the citywide youth development work plan. And that is something that will continue to be under YPSY. And there's going to be some overlap, to be sure, but I don't think any of that, the charge of O I D changes at all. You know, one of the things that you brought up, I'd like to respond to, is that, you know, the public safety, youth being re-categorized and redefined as part of public safety, we don't develop our budgets that way. We don't have a set amount of money for public safety, for youth. These are contracts that this council approves every year, every two years, every three years, depending on the scope here. So, you know, that, those are, again, two different conversations. If we want to provide more funding to any departments, this is really the time to do it. And it's not that we put them in different buckets because we consider them all separately. And then the last piece is this allocation tool that Jackie talked about when it comes to using an equity lens. We're in the process of doing that, but it's also incumbent on this council to further define what that is. And once that comes back to staff, we'll be able to use that more broadly across the budget.
Thanks, thanks, Howard. Appreciate your responses on that. I just do have one more item, and that's around the SAC Children's Fund. So lastly, Jackie, I want to say thank you for presenting really just the high-level presentation around the implementation. And I know that the majority of these dollars actually won't be implemented until 2024, like you shared, until we actually have a strategic plan and the Oversight Commission, which I know Mindy is working on to ensure that we can do the onboarding. I think one of the callers had mentioned, we did, the measure did set aside twenty percent of, up to twenty percent, we don't have to use it all, but up to twenty percent of funding in its first year to really build the internal capacity. And so, one, I'm really thrilled to hear that we're going to begin to build that capacity because I want to make sure that we set this up for success. You did mention an R F P that will go out. Wanted to know what was the timeline on that again for the R F P?
So I can share, if this will allow me to go back. We are in the final stages of developing the R F P, and we have a team of six that includes staff from YPSY and O I D that is now supporting us, incredible team, that is developing this. It's in its final stages of review, so we're looking to post it within the next three weeks. We're hopeful to run it for about a month or so and would look to completing the solicitation process and having a consultant selected between August and September, potentially sooner.
Okay, great. Awesome, that's good. I just, I think just kind of, just for transparency purpose and wanting to kind of know when that will go out as well. And then the last just comment I have is, I know we're in the process of opening up the application for the commissioners on the SAC Children's Fund, and there's been conversation about potentially holding a community meeting or a joint meeting. And I'd like to make a direction, Howard, really to you and Jackie, if possible, that y'all can team up with my office, the mayor's office, to really hold a joint meeting with youth policy experts in our region, right? Again, eight million dollars sounds like a lot, but I want us to be creative and innovative about how we can be strategic with those dollars to draw down more money for our babies and our youth in our city. And so would like to partner with you, City Manager, and also with our team to lead that effort and to have that convening with the mayor's office. And so that's my last direction, and those are all my comments.
Yeah, happy to do that. I think that's a great idea. Part of the challenge right now is to get proponents of this measure, you know, not real clear on all the moving parts to it, and to have you as that buffer would be phenomenal.
Okay, great. So I look forward to working with you and the YPSY team on co-creating that convening that will be happening soon this summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me just say, you know, how extremely proud I am about all of our staff in the city and for you, Jackie, for talking about our people, not F T Es, our actual people on there, because it is, it is that force that has made it such an amazing place for us to be at. And so that's, and for the amount that gets done with such a few staff and for any of those, I know we didn't show it this time around, but if, in the past, we've shown the acreage per employees that we have and how much acreage of park space or even community space has increased, but our staff have not. And yet, we continue to push and provide a welcoming place for folks. So I'm, for all the park employees here, our YPSY employees, our maintenance staff that are here, our rangers that are here, our fourth R folks and that are helping out our youth and managing all of our aquatics and everything. First, I just want to say thank you. I mean, because it is, you know, it is what helps us as parents, it helps us as community and in our senior years. You know, the Heart Center, I went and spoke to the Manitos, which is the, it's the only time I've ever seen a Spanish-only community center for folks. And the isolation that happens particularly at an age when, whether you speak Spanish or another language, and to build that sense of community, I hope to go back and play Lotteria with them. So just to say, you know, the sheer joy that you guys create, you really do create joy, and that is such a positive thing that creates a hopefulness. So number one, I think, you know, to my colleagues on the City Council and the City Manager is, first and foremost, support and retain our staff. We got to think through that. And now we're working through that process now because we've gone through a big change in our city and it has made a challenge. And this last fall, I'm glad you mentioned not only deferred maintenance, but the storms and how much damage we took on in this area and even our buildings. I mean, the George Sim had a massive fire last year that affected the community center there and even our pools. We had the bathrooms that were shut down in the pools last year and this year, I'm hoping-
Ready.
Good, that's what I wanted to hear. You know, wanted to start this year's pool with actual bathrooms and not porta potties. So, but it goes back to this point that I, you know, that we need to have, we needed to think through this five-year plan on how we make our public amenities, our public parks stronger, safer. Number one, I think our park maintenance. That means tools, equipment, and staff to be able to achieve them. As mentioned by the Land Park Neighborhood Association here, we just had in Tahoe Park our community cleanup day, and we're fortunate that there are many volunteers that want to come out. We're fortunate that our youth in the L and L program want to come out and participate in that program. But it still puts a lot of stress on our maintenance staff. And then the second piece, I can't stress enough, we, you know, we have nine rangers, is that what our-
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen. And it's thirteen rangers on our personnel and for how many parks?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-five parks.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-five parks, let alone the joint cooperation that we do with the Parkway and the other folks. So, safety at our parks has to be critical. And then there have been situations, not only, you know, with the issue of homelessness in the parks that we have to deal with, but the other piece is sometimes we've had altercations at the parks. And I want to make sure that families that go out for a birthday party know that there's an available ranger to respond to an issue immediately. And when a ranger's going from call to call to call, it doesn't give them the time that when they're at the park to get to know folks and get to talk to the community. And so for me, that, I think we need to think of a strategy of how we look at the personnel about safety, maintenance, and making the parks feel a strong, direct place to go to. You know, the, so I'll focus my points on there. One of the ideas that had been brought up from the community in Tahoe Park at least, and that's a regional park that folks go to, is that it's the old community room there, which is basically, it was storage, but we cleaned it up, thank you for that, but having even a part-time parks person that's there to be eyes on the park, be able to communicate, be able to check out equipment, or at least keep an eye to make sure that the bathrooms aren't vandalized. Having somebody there, I'd like to think creative ways that can we, as we look at that, can we bring in, say, you know, a person who can work in that area, that can help and respond to until we beef up our park safety. So to me, I think I want to focus on that part. I have a couple other comments that I do want to, you know, mention. I'd like to figure out how we create a MyOp for the Granite Regional Park expansion. The fact is, is that mining pit, the last mining pit in Sacramento, has been a public-private partnership, and it was intended that there would be state office buildings, but we know that the state's not building any more office pits, place, office place, so it's just going to be a pit. And so we need to be able to make sure that that becomes an effective place. So I'd like to look at the Granite Regional Park and how we make sure that we fulfill the responsibility of the full reclamation of this mining pit and actually turn it into what could be a regional park issue. And that goes, then, so I'd like to think about how we look at a MyOp for that. That's going to take a long time, you know? We still have to deal with the other side, the eastern side of the mining pit, which we're litigating with the state lands at this point. My own opinion on the Office of Youth Development, Mr. City Manager, the reason it was put in place at that level was so that we can manage the multiple agencies. I still personally think, it's in your purview, but I still personally think that we're trying to make sure that there is a person who is looking at every agency and every department with the authority of the city manager to be able to coordinate. And whether it's them working with the contracts we have for interns from SAC State and the Public Works Department and engineers, or it's our fourth R programming, that it needs to be there. That is my point of view there on that point.
I just want to reassure you, Vice Mayor, that nothing changes. All the staff report to me, and so the assignment naturally would go to YPSY even when it was reporting out of my office. So absolutely nothing has changed, other than the dots on the org chart.
Okay. Well, hey, look, if org charts matter, then moving something up or down makes a difference. So-
But also, if by moving it up, you lack the resources because then you're not embedded in the department. You're not embedded with the work that's actually happening in the department. You're not embedded with the finance team, the admin team. If you have an office of three people, it's not very effective.
You have the power of your office, Mr. City Manager, so.
Yeah, and our office depends on all the other departments.
I understand that. I understand it. And this is here, I'm giving you my point of view here. Whether you agree or not, that's different. But to me, it's a critical point. Okay. And then the last, on the fleet acquisition, again, I think we have, I want to make sure that we're thinking back to my previous comments in the C I P, that we're thinking through what, how we're going to meet our requirements for the advanced clean fleets. How are we looking at, are there opportunities early on where we can take advantage of it? From what I heard, the PG&E bought all the electric F-150s, so I want to make sure that we're not the ones that are in the backend where we can't buy or we're buying at a higher price because the market beat us out on the mid-size, mid-duty vehicles. And so I'll leave it at that. I'll close with saying thank you to the fourth R staff and for making sure that we've made that commitment consistently to helping our young kids and providing parents before and after-school care so they can get to work. And to say if there's a theme here that I want to focus on is back to creating a five-year plan or at least to making sure that we have safe parks, parks with clean bathrooms that kids and families can go to, and supporting and retaining our staff in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jackie, and the Parks Team. I see the entire Parks Division. Can we have you please stand if you work in the Parks Department? Thank you. For all you do, you really do make Sacramento one of the best places to live. City Manager, thank you for consolidating our two youth divisions. It makes sense to have one strong division that is able to kind of touch and work with our police department, work with our fire department, work with our utilities department to consolidate all things youth and to have those conversations and to advertise and promote our events a little stronger. So thank you, City Manager. I've spent five years here at City Hall, and every day I learn something new. Building parks, I see you, Jason, park maintenance, climate change, after-school programming, which I know fourth R always has a waitlist, and camp, I mean, people camp outside these schools to help sign up their kids for the summer. Senior activities, managing our Parks Division, Meals on Wheels, our warming centers for our unhoused, park cleanups, running our community centers, parks permits for events and for Little Leagues, which Little Leagues gets competitive, so thank you for your good customer service. Older adult services, storm response, switching up our canopies, our basketball hoops, removing graffiti, you do it all. And thank you. Thank you for keeping Sacramento clean and for supporting our community. Jackie, I have a question for you. I know we apply for many grants, and I agree with Mayor Protem Vang on how we can better get you more revenue and get you more money for the Parks Department, but what can we as individual council members do when you're applying for grants and for state funding to make you more competitive as a department?
It's a great question. Thank you for your support and for your feedback. I would say just continue working with staff as you have been. If you are made aware of grant opportunities, let us know. We are continuing to fill vacancies for key staff that support that grant application and grant writing effort. So as we fill those vacancies, we'll hopefully build a stronger administrative team that can go after those types of grants and work collaboratively with our partners, with our council offices to, you know, leverage some of that, the power that you have to build and advocate for those dollars. So we'll continue to stay in communication, and we just really appreciate, and also helping us be the eyes and ears in the community and understand what's most important, utilizing a lot of the tools and resources we have to identify competitive projects that will have the biggest impact on our communities. So, thank you.
And I know you presented a lot of information for all of us, but can you please repeat the acreage per-
Sure, so-
-staff person and how it's increased throughout the years, please?
Yes, so currently, we are operating at approximately one park maintenance worker per every thirty-two acres, I believe, excuse me.
Thirty-five and then-
One for every thirty-two acres. In 2017, it was one for every twenty-five acres, and in 2009, it was one person for every fifteen acres.
Wow. Our park maintenance workers are hard at work.
They're incredible.
And I see them there at Truck Wagon Park, and I always like want to stop by and say hi, and I'm like, oh, God, I'm that crazy lady on Her Run that always stops by. So I try and leave them alone, let them do their jobs here and there, I'll stop by and say hi. But you really do have the City Council's support in supporting our workers so that you can do your job, you know, whether that's equipment, more personnel, whatever it is that you need. Like, we as the City Council are very supportive of you and the department, and there's a lot of staff here, and thank you for being here. Like, you have our commitment. And then I do have a question for the City Manager, and I guess Jackie, or more direction for me. I know we're going to be doing an R F P for the consultant for the Measure L, and I just want to say I don't want to spend too much money on it, just because we have a youth commission, we have a parks commission, we have a 2040 general plan, all the surveys that our parks workers did, we have the Measure U Commission participatory budget, we have the City Auditor's survey, and I feel like us as council members, we hear loud and clear every single day of our lives what our community expects from us, whether it's the Southside Pool, whether it's a heater at McClatchy, expansion of the Bonny Pinell, I mean, for me, Doyle Pool, Truck Wagon, I mean, Dog Parks. We all hear from our community day in and day out of what they would like to see, and I hope as we continue these Measure L conversations that we can incorporate some of that feedback, which I know we'll all be assigned a commissioner, so.
Yeah, I'll let Jackie speak to that, but I think that the point of getting a consultant on board now is, we have a bandwidth issue, and Jackie and the team are going to develop a scope of work commensurate with the work we have ahead of us in preparation for July 2024. So Jackie, I don't know what the scope of the agreement is or-
Sure, yeah. So we have existing staff, we have yet to recruit, which we will be doing simultaneously with the strategic plan solicitation, our consultant solicitation, but we have a team of youth experts on board right now on top of their current workload that will be helping us get this R F P moving forward so that the consultant will specifically help with the development of the strategic plan. So it would just be for this first year and the development of the strategic plan, they'd work alongside three staff that we'll be recruiting for, that will be specifically dedicated and assigned to Measure L. that will be specifically dedicated and assigned to Measure L and the implementation. Those staff will be permanent as long as Measure L continues. And the strategic planning consultant will specifically be there to help with that development, perhaps with community engagement, engaging with our council offices. We have a great team that oversees the Sacramento Youth Commission. That's a key component of the measure. And so they will, our, our existing staff will support that relationship and collaboration between the Youth Commission and the Oversight Commission.
Okay. Thank you so much. And that's, you know, my hope is to continue spending our money internally, not externally, investing it here in Sacramento in whether it's deferred maintenance, our parks, and our personnel. So thank you, and I look forward to collaborating with the Parks Department for movies in the park, concerts in the park, Sam and Deanna and everyone at the community center. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to echo what my fellow councilmember Telemontes indicated on how we recognize all of our city parks and maintenance staff and everybody here who keeps it going every day because I do the walk to school for my neighborhood kids. And my kids, I see our parks maintenance for my park every morning. And they've always scheduled it because they know when we're walking along the path. So they're either right before or right after. But it matters because those relationships matter. They know which trees the kids play in as a fort and are always mindful of maintaining them so that fort continues. So that's important because our, our Parks Maintenance, they're not just parks maintenance, but we get to know them that we live in the neighborhood. And so I know we've talked about how important it is that we invest in our city staff. And so a lot of the Parks Budget is Measure U, which is 45 million and then 18 million miscellaneous in, in other areas. So I am hoping that we can take a, a relook because I think what we've heard from our community, Parks in District One, I mean, yes, we're a master plan community, but my parks are just important as, as all other parks. Is the safety of our parks, are they maintained? You know, do they have equipment that works? Are our pools open? Just help me, there, there's a little bit. On page 292 of our budget, one of the graphs it shows is the number of developed park acres per FTE. And I know that number is a little different than what you just mentioned of one park FT, one FTE per 35 acres, where on this graph on 292, it says, you know, estimate is one per 24.49, which your number is much higher. So then that leads me to say, well, what are we doing to add park maintenance staff? Because you're talking about a double that has occurred and how important that is for the city of Sacramento, fundamentally who we are and what we believe in in parks. I think it's time that we, as we not only invest in our employees because they're some of the lowest paid, and our, our parks maintenance workers are getting weekend jobs because they can't make ends meet. And so for me, I want to invest in our current staff, but I think it's time we have to create a plan to add some park maintenance. And then when we talk about safety, 3% of UPSI is park safety. That's not okay. We talk about the increased duty that they've had. I think we should be adding at least two more Park Rangers this year and looking at it because it's investing in the city, our fundamental beliefs, because there isn't one of us who don't say that our park safety isn't, isn't of a top priority because that's a community investment. So I'm interested in hearing from my fellow council members. But I also would love to see, like, the plan because you're talking about our employees are being asked to do more. And there, some of them are the least paid within our city. How do we, how do we do that? And in reality, why don't we look at bringing in more Parks Maintenance Workers? Because I think it will address a lot of what our community wants to see, and it's how we, we invest in our community. So that's something I am, I'm really, I know there's a balance because we want to pay our city employees more and especially our park maintenance deserve that more. But also paying them more and then asking them to do more. You know, they're going to find other areas in other cities to go work in where they can maybe earn a little more and work less. That's, that's not, you know, the city that we want to be in. So that's something for me that's very important. And I love our discussion of what does that look like in our budget? And is that something that we could potentially do? And then I'd love to see, too, if our police officers have to wear body cameras. I know our Park Rangers deal unfortunately with the increased amount of homelessness. And, you know, I want them protected. And, you know, I see body cameras as a protection for the city and a protection for them as well, for the stuff that they're doing because we already have a lot of vacancies in, in SAC PD. And I know that our chief is switching things around. Sometimes Park Rangers come in to fill the gap. And, you know, that begs the question, for a different time and a different discussion, do our Park Rangers deserve to also be armed because they have to go through the same training? So a, a discussion I know you're looking at is objectives of coming back. My district and a little bit of Councilmember Telemontes' district were a little different because our residents tax themselves for, for park maintenance. And I fully believe in equity because while I'm a newer community and I have parks, because we also have funding, our, our residents tax themselves more to keep that maintenance, that I want to see equity in the rest of the city. And a lot of these fields come up to the same standards as, as newer parks. But that also, I think there's a balance because during some of the, the storms, when we as a city have a policy that sports fields get shut down, there is a balance because our fields are newer. They may be able to be played on. And I understand the equity argument, but the city is also losing fees because those sports teams are going outside the city to play. And so jurisdictions outside are getting all the fees that we as a city. So I don't know the answer. I just know there's a balance that if the fields that can be played on should be played on, but also we should, as you use the GIS mapping tool, prioritize where we can throughout the rest of the city. So it's not just those that have the built-in maintenance and funding can open, but the rest of the city. But there is that balance of, most of my, my Little League teams went outside the city and paid to surrounding jurisdictions to play when there might have been possibility to keep them in here, which would have then brought in more revenue. So I look forward to that ongoing discussion as I know it's an upcoming objective. But I'm very interested in that. And then Mayor Pro Tem Mayveng, with your meeting with the mayor on the Office of Youth Development, or not Office of Youth Development, but Measure L and youth, I would love to be considered part of that and hear the investment and as you meet with all the youth, you know? Might have done 20 years somewhere else. So I would love to be part of that as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, of course. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll try to be quick because a lot of my comments have already been said. Great presentation today. And you've been here in this position how long?
Six months.
Six months. You said six months.
Six months.
Not six years. Six months.
Feels like six years.
You are doing an incredible job.
Thank you.
Of leading a, a dynamic department. And I want to acknowledge you as we've acknowledged your, your employees, your people. I want to acknowledge you as well. That's right. Give her a round of applause. That's right.
Thank you.
I, I just want to tag on what my colleagues have said a little bit about the Park Ranger situation. I know personally that you've told me how many parks we have, 235. How many acres we have, 4360. I know I'm going to add two more parks to that by adding Crocker Village and the Delta Shores West. I also know that I'm going to add some more trails to that in the Del Rio Trail and the Sacramento River Parkway Trail. And then they're going to connect into the Sacramento Region Trail Network. And as all of that happens, there's going to be a growing need, before the five years comes up, there's going to be a growing need for more Park Rangers in order to help us with the safety aspect of our parks. On any given weekend, when you go through the city of Sacramento and you go look at our parks, people are out there and they're taking advantage of their parks. And so I'm, I'm a really big proponent right now of talking about trying to do something to increase the number of Rangers and try to get the call rate down to the 2021 rates when it was 240 calls per Ranger as opposed to the projected 2024 rate of 500 calls per Ranger. And so with the increased call rate, with the amount of Rangers, with the parks that we have, if we were to get back down to the 2021 rate, that would let me know we would need like 22 Rangers right now as opposed to the 13 that we have. That's just my math. It might, I'd be right. But it's the math that I, that I did when I did my calculator, so I hope it's right. But I just want to, you know, say that I think you guys are doing a great job. I think we can do more to help this whole situation. Finding grants, working with you to make sure that we're working together to increase the opportunities that you have. And we will do that. I mean, now that we've looked at this, we will do that. And I'm just excited about the opportunity to work with you and your, and your staff in making parks one of the best departments that we have. I now have a community center for the first time in my years on the council. The Bell Coolish Community Center is one that I now have fallen in love with. And I now have to go give them a concert because they told me that, you know, you give everybody else a concert, but you don't give us a concert. So I have to bring a concert to them, which is in the plans and in the works. But I see the great work that you do every single day. I, I don't see it throughout the whole city, but I can see it every day in the areas that I visit. And so I just want to continue to help you to get to where you want to be. And right now, the biggest area of focus for me is the Park Rangers. Of course, the Dog Parks. With the pandemic, there have been more people wanting to run their dogs and get the exercise and probably run with their dogs as well. And so there's going to be an increased number of Dog Parks. And we should probably project that over the next five years of how many that, that we will need because people are in love with their animals, and so they should be. And I think we have to start looking forward as opposed to just what we have, but what we're going to need. So that's just another thing I wanted to add to the table. But I'm very much like Councilmember Gera in the five-year plan of what do we want our parks to look like. And so from the standpoint of Rangers, it's from the standpoint of maintenance, from the standpoint of Dog Parks, I want to make sure we're looking at that proactively. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I want to echo the thanks to Jackie and your team and just the thanks to the entire Parks Department and to echo the call that, you know, our Parks people are moving mountains. And I really want to echo that. We want to take care of them. We want them to be good. We want them to have what they need to do their jobs and to take care of themselves and their families. So I have a couple of questions for you, Jackie, and then a couple of comments. You mentioned the weather-based activations at the community centers, and that's another example of Park Staff moving mountains. I remember just the overtime and the learning-as-you-go and the sort of work we were doing to try to bring in help to say, okay, here's how we can bring in some people to help train people on how to help do this in a way that makes sense. So do you have any estimate on like what the financial impact has been for Parks to do the weather-based activations? I mean, I know you might not have it right now, so you can follow up.
Definitely done an analysis that I'd be happy to provide, but also happy to share that as we've continued to fill vacancies, our community center hours have expanded, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. That's new, coming out of the pandemic, and then Saturday hours as well. So ultimately, as we continue to fill vacancies, our goal will be to continue to expand those hours of operation, just having our spaces open anytime that they're needed. But I can absolutely follow up with an analysis of what those impacts were.
Yeah.
Ms. Valenzuela, I will follow up with the fact we're coming back to this council on the 23rd with the discussion about Measure O implementation. We're going to be providing an update on the respite centers and activation temperatures and things like that. So we can have that information as part of that.
Okay, that would, that would be great. And unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town next week for a planned conference, so I'll watch the tape later. Which is of all the weeks to be out of town, the one week that I'm going to miss.
You want to put it off?
I would love to have it the next week.
Then we'll put it over.
That would be amazing. Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Of course.
Thank you. That's a motion, I think.
We don't need to jam it. We'll put it over.
That would be amazing. Thank you. Because it's a, it's a building electrification conference, which is very salient to other city priorities. And so I don't want to miss that and not, and bring that information back. Thank you. Yes, I would love to hear that because obviously, especially in the summer for cooling centers, that's huge. And I want to give props for something that people might not know you're working on, which is the map for water. And so we talked at this council before about access to clean drinking water, which is an issue not just from a human rights issue of like, how do you get clean drinking water? But also when people need drinking water, then they end up tapping into things that maybe aren't, isn't a safe way for them to access that water. So the Park Staff is working on a map of where there are jug filling stations already at parks. So we can start working on that to get that out to our unhoused communities so that they know where they can go to access safe drinking water and fill up jugs without. And so I'm really excited about that and want to thank you for your work on that as well. And then I want to make a request for maybe a side meeting with the Southside Park Neighborhood Association to talk about the park permit fee discussion. It is something that I'm very interested in. You know, if somebody is doing a event in a park, I know part of that fee is trying to go back to whatever impact is on that park. And so I'd love to just have that conversation so we can talk about if there's a fee adjustment warranted because Southside Park is used a lot, which I know is, is hard on the neighborhood. I love the fact that Southside Park is used. On the same time, I'm like, when you're trying to go over there to visit somebody that you know at Southside Co-Housing, and you're like, wow, there's like people all over this neighborhood. I just want to see if maybe that's a conversation to have as a sidebar. So that's it for my questions. For you, I want to go back a little bit to the comment that Councilmember Pro Tem Vang made about the definition of public safety because I take, City Manager, what you said seriously, was like, that's not really how we budget. You know, we don't budget for, hey, this is our definition of public safety. But I almost think that's, that we should. And that that's a conversation maybe in the priority setting discussion that I'd love to have because I think we should be budgeting based on our goals for the impact we're hoping our budget will have in the community. And if public safety is our goal, which I think for all of us up here it is, we should be funding all of the tools that we need to achieve that. And so I'd love to have that conversation. And I will flag it in my, in my, in my priority workshop that I know I'm getting interviewed, I think, tomorrow to start talking about that. To say, you know, I think that we should be thinking about how does our budget align with the impact and goals? You know, because success for me is that nobody has to call 911, which I know is far, few and far between emergencies happen. That's always going to be a factor. You're going to need people to respond to emergencies. But ideally, we'd be investing in the things that reduce that. And I think our youth services, our older adult services, those networks that we provide to older adults through these programs, it's also a safety net. You know, elders get abused as well. And it's like, how do we make sure that they know, hey, there's someone you can talk to if you're having a problem so that we can intervene or direct you to the right resources? There's just so much in there to unpack as to how what your department does really does contribute to public safety citywide. Not just what the Rangers do, obviously, every day, but obviously just by providing that preventative and proactive and healthy space for communities to get together. And I know the voters spoke very clearly when they passed Measure L, very, very clearly, that, that this is what they want. And that was always meant to be a supplement to our existing commitment, though, and not a supplanting of what we already do. So I'm really looking forward to these discussions. And I want to also reinforce Mayor Pro Tem Vang's request about how we get revenue. I don't want to leave any funding on the table. And I know that the mayor's going to flinch when I say this and I talk about having this conversation before we adopt the final budget because I'm not going to say that I want, I think the conversation should be done by the final budget, obviously. But there are timely things happening right now. Like, I know the state legislature is negotiating another park bond for the ballot in 2024. And our representatives do a great job of advocating for our region. But like, if we have priorities that we think should be included in that park bond, this feels like the right time for us to make sure that we're getting that voice in the conversation. Both bills are in appropriations of their respective houses. And I just think that there's, there's a moment happening right now at the state, not only to inform, so I feel better about when we adopt the budget, that, hey, we've got a plan for more revenue, whether it's development fees or what have you, but also knowing that we're taking advantage of those timely opportunities with the state conversations that are going on as well.
I didn't flinch.
No, okay, good. Because I know that you have so much. I'm like, we're just going to add more things to the agenda for budget nodding in a couple of weeks. But I just think sooner the better so that we can really make sure we're weighing in, not just in those state conversations, but even if we adopt a budget that we're like, gosh, we didn't quite get there where we wanted to with capital improvements or whatever, knowing that there's some ideas that are moving forward would just give me a lot of comfort.
Just two quick things here. And my point, my comment earlier was just to say there's not a nexus to our budgeting process. And I get what you're saying, we should, that there's a percentage set out for public safety, for parks, for HR, for IT. It's not, it's not that way. And it's just, it's happened organically and through negotiations, the various contracts with all 11 of our bargaining agreements, and they just came to be. And if we want to have a fundamental reshuffling, there's going to have to be some transition period here because we are locked in for some period of time.
Of course. And I, and I don't think, I would expect anything to happen like tomorrow or even next year. I just think it's a conversation that I'd love for us to start thinking about, you know? I remember when I first met you, Howard, this was like when I was a little neighborhood organizer and organizing groups in Oak Park. And we were saying, gosh, there's, we want like a performance metrics dashboard, right? You remember this? I'm like, I want like a dashboard where I can say like, how quickly are 311 calls being responded? But like priorities that are determined by the community. But like priorities that are determined by the community. And so like what their priorities are, which would be like, yeah, I want to see reduced crimes per 1,000 people in Sacramento. Like, I think we'd all agree that would be a goal, right? You know, I want to see fast response time on 311 calls. I'd like to see certain things available within a certain distance of every kid in Sacramento. So like, how do we set those goals? And then maybe not 100% flip our budget upside down, but start using that to help inform how we allocate our resources so we can show the community we're making progress.
If in the coming weeks here, if that, for instance, falls to the top of the priority list, we will be back here, city staff, all the people you see here and some of the people you don't, will tell you how we get there and what the trade-offs are. And that's where this body gets to decide what the priorities are.
And I think there's a lot of great models that other cities are doing around the country too. So I think we could not have to reinvent the wheel either, but just a factor to think about, especially if we're looking at potentially leaner times and we don't have big federal checks coming in from ARPA for a little while, although we could still send that letter and be like, come on, federal government. But yeah, that's my thoughts. Thank you for thank you for the time, Mayor.
Of course. Councilman Lowey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'll make this very quick. I just want to thank you and the entire staff. Truly, you guys have done a great job. And, you know, youth, safe space, sense of community, that spells out the parks for us, especially, you know, in communities like mine. And just echoing with my colleagues, Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Kaplan alluded to, and that is, safety is a big thing. And having park rangers that can, you know, monitor the parks, especially in certain communities, that just brings more of a sense of community to be able to use those parks. So with that said, again, thank you so much for all that you're doing. I know money is the the need right now, and hopefully, our revenue this year is going to triple compared to last year.
Yeah, right.
And maybe the Kings will make it to the championship game next year. And that will address all of our concerns when it comes to money. So I just want to say thank you very much for all that you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, a couple of things. I want to make a comment and ask a question. So I heard somebody whisper, we need the federal government. Yeah, it was you, Mayor. I mean, we need Joe Biden. Unfortunately, well, depending on one's perspective, from our perspective, I think up here, the fact that there's a divided federal government now means that the prospect of additional federal relief funds, at least in the short run, is not possible. And so we're faced with this dilemma. And as I'm listening to the questions and Jackie, your presentation, it does strike me that a lot of leaders in this city have tough jobs, but you may have one of the toughest. You really may, because look at what the look at the cross pressures here, all right? You have 137, we, we, not you, we have 137 million-dollar deferred maintenance need, and that's real, right? Those are kids and families playing in our parks. We have the desire and rightful desire to build new facilities. I heard two of them, and there's a third one I know of. Eric Etta talking about a budget for building out Granite Park. Jennings talked about Crocker Park and one other park, of course, with Mayor Protem Vang. We are couldn't be more excited about using Measure N to build a regional youth sports facility in South Sacramento. That's another demand. And then, not in spite of, but in addition to the fact that, as I said last week, this is the season where we really are committed to taking care of our city employees, and we are committed to sharing our basic services, the voters, the voters, the people in the city pass Measure L, which is not inconsistent with any of the above, but let's just say it puts a different fine point on another aspect of of youth. And that is youth development. That is workforce. That is investing more externally in our good community-based organizations. And so there's only one way we get through all this together in a way that we stay, and that is we stay together. And the Measure L implementation with the commission and the consultant and YPSI and all of that is, and the members and the community, this is an opportunity to either, as the great revolutionary war hero said, we either hang hang together or we hang separately. But because we have to stay together on this, even if we have different points of view, we have to listen to one another, right? The the community and Sac Kids First, I love it. Monica said it, I thought, very eloquently, that the youth of the community are depending upon a strong city infrastructure to be able to deliver a lot of the things that Measure L calls for. And at the same time, I think it is important on the public side to recognize that that thinking sometimes differently about partnership with the community can be a healthy thing as well. I have my own experience with this, and some of it was after I left the city council for the first time, but I launched Sacramento Start, some of my great proud achievements in 95. I thought it would be around forever. And it largely went away because the nonprofit sector could provide those services in a more cost-effective way. And that's the way it was. And the council made, you know, my predecessors actually made some very hard decisions there. So I we talk about this a lot, the city manager, I talk about this a lot, Mayor Protem Vang and I talk about this a lot, we talk about it. Let us stay together, even as we might have different perspectives on what the outcome will be. Because in the end, the measurement that really matters is how many young people are we serving in what ways and what are the quality of the services and programs we're providing them? And I'm going to keep reinforcing this because it's so easy, because it gets a little political, it gets a little philosophical, it gets a little turfy. But we're one family, and let's just all stretch with each other to listen to the other side in perspective. L happened for a reason, and it was motivated by good and great things. And by the way, it adds more money to the youth side, even if it's not additional money. It does say more money on the youth side. That's good, from what I'm hearing from all my colleagues here. So we figure it out together. That's one thing. The second thing is more of a question you don't have to answer now, but I do think it's really important. God forbid, the hot summer's coming. And, you know, God forbid, something somewhere is going to happen in the community that's going to be high-profile and get a lot of attention, and people are going to ask the question, what are we doing and what are we offering for our young people this summer? It happens all the time. Why not answer that question now? It's embedded within the pages of the budget, not only in YPSI, but tonight, when we hear the police department budget through the Office of Violence Prevention and a couple other places. It's all green money, and most of it is going out to various community-based organizations in addition to some of the city programming that is vital. We need to compile that. It needs pleased to be presented at one of our budget hearings as a follow-up so that we're really clear as we go into the summer, the array of investments and activities that we are offering, and so there's no misunderstandings. And people can critique it or praise it, right? It's not enough. It's great. Look at all the geography we're hitting within the city. Look at the Friday and Saturday nights we're we're covering in the city. Look at all the job opportunities we're providing to the city. But that needs to be real clear across budgets so that the public is clear that we're really focusing on the summer of 2023 for our young people in the city.
Mayor, I think you'll be pleased. We'll bring this back to budget and audit. We'll pull it together between YPSI and the police department to do exactly that.
Okay.
And just very quickly, then I'll stop. Measure L here, the beauty of all of this conversation, I like where the conversations have been going with the proponents, people on this dais here. The beauty of all of it is there's language in this. It's up to this council to decide how to do this. You know, we're going to work together to put together a proposal that hits a little bit of everything, and everybody's going to stretch. I think that's a good word. But ultimately, it's going to be up to this council.
The beauty of L, by the way, is that it repeats itself every single year, right? Not a one-time thing.
Ongoing.
It's gonna it'll evolve into exactly what the intent is and was as we move forward together, okay? Thank you, everybody.
I have one more thing.
Yes?
Okay, I just, since I have Jackie here and our park staff and the city manager, we're talking about summer, I'd like to see what it would cost or what it would be like to turn on all our sprinklers when it's over 100 degrees in our parks, you know, at four or five o'clock, and it's cheap, hopefully, and see if we can do it so kids can just run around.
We'll do a report back on that when we go to B and A.
Okay, thank you.
Before we can adjourn, we do have, we do have five people who testified an item is not on the agenda. Go, go.
First is Mauricio Chavez, Chris Diamond, Eric Morgan. So please come forward if I call your name. Mauricio Chavez, Chris Diamond, Eric Morgan.
Good.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Mauricio Chavez. I was selected to represent the 37,000 union carpenters here in Northern California, as well as the 3,200 members here in Sacramento County. I just wanted to come and share my story with you and let you know what it means and how important a union life, a union job means to people in the middle class. My son has ADHD, but before we found out that he had it, he was getting sent home for emotional disruptions and not keeping his hands to himself. But we were able to get him the help that he needs and get him squared away. That was about three months ago, and now he's straight A's. I mean, he's only in second grade, but he's getting like As and like just completely 180 degrees. We're afforded a retirement that I know that at one point in my life, I can retire with dignity. I won't have to die of a heart attack like my buddy did while we were rolling out in Kaiser one morning. The apprenticeship program that we are offered is second to none. The international invests millions of dollars in us apprentices and train the trainers and state-of-the-art training facilities across the country. And as well as using the local hire, it helps people build where they live. It helps lower greenhouse gas emissions by not having to traffic people in from other states and countries and counties and cities. Let people work where they live and build where they live. Thank you.
Next, Chris Diamond, and then Eric Morgan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Chris Diamond. I'm an organizer for the Carpenters Union. I wasn't quite sure what I was going to speak on today, but I happen to be walking through your park right over here. And you have a great statue with this labor quote, "Capital and labor together produce the fruits of the land, but what really counts is labor. The human beings who torture their bodies, sacrifice their youth, and numb their spirits to produce this great agricultural wealth, a wealth so vast that it feeds all of America and much of the world, and yet the men and women and children who are the flesh and blood of this production often do not have enough to feed themselves." I think that is a very apropos point. There are a lot of developers and unscrupulous contractors around this area and in this whole country that take advantage of residential home builders. These folks work extremely hard. I did construction myself for 20 years. You work in extremely harsh environments, you work long hours, and the least you could do is ensure that the least that these contractors could do is ensure that these folks are being paid and can afford to buy the homes that they built. You know, I would challenge any of you to go out and build a home for $17 to $25 an hour and then try and buy that, let alone feed your family, pay for health care, or buy a vehicle or the tools you need to do it. You know, as your city expands, and I know that you need housing, as many communities in this country do, that you ensure that developers and the contractors that they're hiring are not taking advantage of our workers, that they can afford to put themselves in their own homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Morgan, and then Nikaria Hunter?
Yeah.
Nikia, perfect.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Eric Morgan. I'm a representative for the Carpenters Union. I come before you today to reiterate a very important issue that this city is facing. And I know everybody in this room knows about it, which is the housing crisis. I think it is it is amazing that the city has been making efforts to mitigate the crisis, but along with those efforts should come a responsibility, a responsibility to grow community wealth. Unfortunately, a lot of the developers and contractors that have been selected do not have that same goal in mind. Their mindset is to cut corners and underpay the workforce, underpay the workers that are building these complexes, and to turn the biggest profit possible for themselves and their companies. This city has a responsibility to these projects and to the workers building them, a responsibility to ensure that the workers are being paid a livable wage and to help measure and to help have measures in place to utilize contractors that hold safety, apprenticeship utilization, and fair wages at the top of their priorities. Everyone has heard the saying, rob Peter to pay Paul. Well, in this case, the current contractors on these housing projects are taking from Peter and robbing Paul. Is that fair? The answer is no. I asked every council member to keep the worker in mind when making decisions that concern building this city and to look towards the long-term goal, which is community wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikaria, and then Christina Rogers.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Nikia Hunter, a representative for the Carpenters Union. Joining the union allowed me opportunities to expand my education and my skills while affording me the ability to really live and travel and buy a home and afford the uncovered medical needs for my children. The protections that the union job site demands allow workers to go to and from work unharmed and protected by our contracts. It affords me the ability to pay my bills and have nice things. I want the same things for my brothers and sisters here in Sacramento, building these much-needed projects that our communities need, want, and deserve. We owe it to our brothers and sisters to educate, teach, train, and instill the tools needed to be the best hands available. That doesn't happen when we allow them to be underpaid and left with no health care, sleeping in their cars and unable to afford the simple necessities because they're barely making minimum wage. I thank you for listening to me today, and I hope that labor standards mean as much to you as they mean to me. Thank you.
Christina Rogers, and then McWhorty is our final speaker.
Hello again. Okay, so right now I'm going to free flow. I've heard a lot about the, you know, we need park rangers, we need maintenance, it's the budget, there's all these issues. There's a great money-making opportunity that you guys are missing out on right now, and that is the permitting process in the park. It needs, you, somebody needs to do a full deep dive and look at how the process is actually working. Because I walk through Land Park almost every day. I walk my dog, I see what's going on. And on the weekends, there's tons of parties, there's tons of stuff happening. Just two days ago, when I was walking, I found all this garbage that was left after somebody had a party. I mean, there's a full cake here that nobody even used. People are not taking stuff home. They're bringing a bunch of stuff in, and they're just leaving it in the park, which obviously puts a lot of pressure on maintenance, right? So what I would recommend is that, yes, you look at the permitting process, you look at the ability to maybe have the park rangers involved in that process. Like, for instance, for for an example, okay, let's say I want to have a party at the park, right? I want to be able to go on my phone, get my $15, $20 permit, put it in, and then I have a QR code, right, that comes back to me. And so if the park ranger is cruising around, he's like, oh, I just want to see if you guys have your permit, give you a little information so when you leave the park, could you please keep it clean or whatever, take your stuff with you? I can show them my permit. That would be great. Also, park rangers, they do give tickets to people who are speeding. We have problems with speeding and donuts and dangerous behavior in the park. So this could also be something that if you would encourage or support them in giving those tickets out, that's going to raise money for the park. That's going to raise money for other things like youth programs, like the maintenance and care. So I think, you know, take a look at the thing that you have right in front of you
Mac Worries, our final speaker today.
Would you put this back up there, possible? Please, boy.
Please proceed.
You see now, I can come here and speak back 1981. The new folks coming here, what did you bring here new? Nothing. The same old shit that I've heard for 30 years, come right back here. Nothing about investor. The mayor said partnership. Why didn't he get a broker to put the equity in community property and build the low-income housing, and you would have a supplement dollar? But he ignorant. You don't have no professional expert in Spanish here. Nowhere. Where is the other part of the community? Where now the parking rights? Why can't you train those boys how to use a chainsaw when a tree falls, the lungs ain't got no vaccine, call that crowd, and pay him? Come on, chainsaw, preparation. What have you seen of the youth, the money put out, and you helped the youth here? Nothing, people, you can't show me one. You can't show me one success. I can show your granddaughter getting ready to go to Harvard Medical School. It's funny, right here. What did I do? On my own, my baby didn't go to no organized play field unless their mama and daddy with them. Watch your baby, folks, because it's coming. Crime gonna come, and it gonna be bad here in Sacramento. It gonna be bad, because you don't even know who is here. You got these neighborhood organizations. That's what I want to know. I want to know their names, because I will show some evidence, and we will go to court, because that's your political base, the churches, where are the churches? That's your political voting base, that's we need here. They can't come here and speak business. The cheesecake guy, the only black man called here and talked about business, I taught him the strategy when he showed me, somebody messed up with the City Manager, some money he's supposed to been getting down here. Who cut that in the back that he didn't get that much?
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned to closed session at 4:35 p.m.